And thank you, Council. I think there's just been places that they go, especially in Northern California, with their identity and agriculture, and I very much appreciate the respect they need from them on behalf of every California.
Oh, we have a ceremony. You can do whatever you want to do, Chief. Introducing Chief, Police Chief Christian Sacks. Take it away.
I can face this way first. So, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, here we go again. Right? All this stuff up here, hold on.
Need some help.
We'll get situated. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, it's my pleasure this evening to honor one of our individuals retiring with a long, successful career, not only with our agency but with a couple other agencies. This individual is also near and dear to my heart, been one of my best friends for the last 16 years. So, it's one of those things where it's truly an honor for me to be here to be able to present him this evening and congratulate him on his successful career. So, I've got a proclamation to read, bear with me, and then some other ceremonial stuff.
Chief, proceed, and I never feel safer than when I see this many policemen in the audience.
That's why I decided to face this way. Okay? Here we go. Whereas, we are here today to honor Reserve Captain David L. Baker on his retirement and his 28 years of distinguished and dedicated service to law enforcement profession. And whereas Reserve Captain David Baker started his law enforcement career as a police officer in the city of Placerville from 1997 to 1999, whereas he eventually moved on to work as a deputy for the Eldorado County Sheriff's Department from 1999 to 2004. He eventually moved on to work back at Placerville Police Department for his second tour of duty from 2004 to 2009, whereas he made his final home at the Marysville Police Department, where he spent the remainder of his career from 2009 to 2025. Whereas Reserve Captain David Baker has been a valued member of the Marysville Police Family for the past 16 years. During his 16 years with the city of Marysville, he has held the ranks of Division Commander, Chief of Police, and most recently Captain of the Reserve Police Officers' Unit. Whereas during his 28-year career, Reserve Captain David Baker was an instructor in many different areas, was a member of the SWAT team and a SWAT team leader, and received several awards and recognition, and the list goes on and on. Most notably, Reserve Captain David Baker received a Life Saving Valor Award, multiple Distinguished Service Medals over his career, Officer and Reserve Officer of the Year Awards, and, for some of you that don't know, he was a Silver and Bronze Medalist in the 1999 California Police and Fire Olympics. Whereas Reserve Captain Baker brought a vast amount of experience to the operations of our organization from patrol investigations, background investigations, internal affairs, instruction, and leadership. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Christian Sacks, Chief of Police, and the City Council of the city of Marysville do hereby recognize, congratulate, and thank Reserve Captain Baker for his 28 years of dedicated service to the profession and the communities that you've served. Congratulations. There you go. And we've got a plaque for you. Thank you, sir. We've got a plaque also for him to hang, David L. Baker, Captain, in recognition of your 28 years of dedicated service in the law enforcement profession, 1997 to 2005. I know some of you in the back weren't even born yet, but we were keeping your parents safe. Okay? So, there's that. At this time, I'd like to call up Reserve Officer David Copeland of the Marysville Police Reserve Officers' Association.
Chief Sacks. Former Chief Baker.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to recognize former Chief Dave Baker. This gentleman, I can't say enough about. He has impacted the lives of every member in this department in one way or another as an example of service before self. Whether it be responding to a call to apprehend a dangerous criminal, save the life of somebody, or simply driving down the street and seeing a trash can knocked over and stopping to pick up that trash because he cares about the city, that's the kind of man that is retiring today. And our Reserve Officers' Association would like to pay him respect and thank him for his 28 years of dedicated service, a distinguished career, and meritorious service as a law enforcement professional. Thank you, former Chief Baker.
Yeah, they got all three of them in there. Look at that. All right. Next, I would like to invite up David Morgan with Congressman Lamalfa's office and Isabel Morgan from Assemblyman Gallagher's office.
Thank you, Chief, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. It's my honor to be here today on behalf of Congressman Doug Lamalfa's office to present Reserve Captain David Baker, great name, by the way, to recognize your 28 years of law enforcement service, not just here in the city of Marysville, but throughout the entire North State. We appreciate the work that you've done. I know you've got countless stories of going above and beyond cleaning up the trash. You know, that's not usually something you see from your local law enforcement, but that we have a special breed up here in the North. So, we greatly appreciate the service that you do, the work that you've done, and the distinguished career. You know, you've been in many different areas, and we really, really do, I can't express enough how much gratitude we have from the Congressman's office, from the rest of our staff, job well done. And we hope you have a great retirement, and we wish you all the best. So, thank you, Chief.
I always have to adjust the mic whenever all these tall people speak. But hello, my name is Isabella Morgan. I'm with Assemblyman Gallagher's office, and I just want to address the council and the rest of you and Reserve Captain Baker. I wanted to present you on behalf of Assemblyman Gallagher this beautiful resolution. It is a joint resolution on behalf of the Assemblyman and the Senator, Senator Megan Dolly, and I just want to read a small portion of it because there are a lot of words. But whereas Reserve Captain David Baker of Marysville Police Department has been true to the ethics of law enforcement and continually demonstrated honesty, integrity, professionalism, and leadership in all his varied assignments for the past 28 years, and upon the occasion to celebrate his retirement from the department since January 1st, he is deserving of special public recognition and the highest commendations. Thank you so much for your dedication to all the communities that you've served, and we wish you the best. Congratulations, and I hope you have an amazing retirement.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Thank you very much. Words cannot express what this moment means to me at the culmination of what has been a wonderful, exciting, and very rewarding career. I entered into this line of work following a long line of law enforcement professionals in my family, and I would just like to take a moment to honor them by name. My grandfather, Monroe Lee Baker, Eldorado County Sheriff's. My father, Monroe Lee Baker II, Eldorado County Sheriff's. Would like to also recognize my sister who's here in the audience, Kristi Schultz, retired Eldorado County Sheriff's. And I would like to recognize my brother-in-law, Sergeant Ben Schultz, the Eldorado County Sheriff, also here in the room. Like I said, words cannot express the honor that I have had and feel serving alongside the men and women of the Marysville Police Department, by far some of the finest men and women that I have ever had the pleasure of serving with. I want to thank my dear friend and colleague, Chief Sacks, for his unwavering support and his leadership of this fine department. It was by far the pinnacle of my career in having the honor, albeit brief for only about two and a half years, to lead this agency before going into the private sector as the police chief. So, for those of you that were here then, or for those of you that were still in high school, thank you for your commitment, your dedication, and your support. So, without further ado, thank you to the citizens of Marysville as well, and to the state of California, of which I have had the greatest honor in serving. Thank you.
Can we get a group photo with everybody? There we go. He already knew what I was thinking.
Can we get a group photo with everybody? Can you get the door? Well, that was fun. Back to business as best we can. Mr. City Attorney, anything to report out of closed session?
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Mayor, the City Council unanimously authorized the City Attorney's Office to commence nuisance abatement actions against the property at 530 Fourth Street and 615 F Street. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll now move on to opportunity for public comment on anything not on the agenda or anything on the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, any speakers?
I have no speakers tonight, Mayor.
Oh, darn. Okay, thank you. We'll now move to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent agenda are routine and therefore approved typically by one motion, unless a council member or the city manager first requests that a matter be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. What is the will of the council?
To the Chair, I would like for item number six, a date to be corrected on that item to today's date. Thank you.
You would like what?
The date to be changed. The date has an error. Should have today's date that we're going to be approving it.
You're on top of things.
Sorry.
That could be done, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Date is incorrect.
I'd say I caught that too, but I didn't. Again, what's the will of the council with subject to the correction?
I'll move to approve.
Motion? Move? Move to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? That's unanimous, ma'am. Okay, let's get serious here. We now move to the Discussion and Action Calendar. All matters in Discussion and Action Calendar are discussed and acted on individually. Individuals will be allowed time to speak on each item prior to discussion. Please note, in accordance with state law, the City Council is not permitted to take any action on any item not on the posted agenda. First matter, item number eight on the agenda, Yuba Subbasins Groundwater Sustainability Plan 2025 Revision. The recommendation by city management is to pass an appropriately numbered motion acting as a North Yuba Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency to first approve the Yuba Water Agency's revised 2025 Yuba Subbasins Groundwater Sustainability Plan, and two, to opt in to any future revisions until such time as the council wishes to opt out by writing to the Yuba Water Agency. Vincenzo, would you please explain that to us?
Sure, you bet. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council, Vincenzo Carraza, Public Works Director. The item before you is to approve a revision to the Groundwater Sustainability Plan as required by state law every five years, and to also opt in to any future updates to the plan. In 2019, 2020, the city of Marysville, Coruah Irrigation District, and the Yuba Water Agency formed a Groundwater Sustainability Committee, and they developed a common groundwater sustainability plan to ensure that we do not overdraw our water supply within 20 years. Marysville adopted officially at the May 19th, 2020 City Council meeting. Vice Mayor Bada Cavoli and Councilor Hudson was on that council. And as you may recall, these plans require an update every five years and submitted to the Department of Water Resources. So, five years is up, and with me are our friends from the Yuba Water Agency, who are the experts on groundwater sustainability. That's Ryan McNally. There you go. Kyle Morgado, Jim Lyne, all right, and Charles Dunk. They will give you a quick presentation and answer your questions. So, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you, Vincenzo. Well, first of all, I'd like to say, at first I thought, due to the large audience in the room, that there was a large interest in groundwater. And it's a topic that I'm sure you don't hear about much here at the City Council. Well, today, I'm going to speak to you about the Yuba Subbasins Amending Groundwater Sustainability Plan. Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, thank you for having us. So, first, I'm going to talk about how we got to this plan, the legislation behind it, and the process for amending the plan, what's in the plan, and next steps.
The Yuba Water Agency is the controlling agency with respect to groundwater?
That is correct. So, we are a groundwater sustainability agency, so our jurisdiction covers the north and south Yuba Subbasin, and we're responsible for the health of the groundwater subbasins.
Okay.
And so, we developed a plan, really, so due to the overreliance of groundwater in many parts of the state, there was legislation that was created because there were impacts to water supply, groundwater levels, groundwater storage, water quality, subsidence, and many other issues in California. Next slide. So, the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act is legislation that established a framework for managing groundwater. So, SIGMA requires formation of groundwater sustainability agencies. Yuba Water Agency, the city of Marysville, and Coruah Irrigation District all became groundwater sustainability agencies back in 2015. You can see in the image on the right on the screen the boundaries of the basin. Yuba Water Agency's boundary covers all of the north and south basin. And you can see in the middle of the north basin is Coruah Irrigation District, and in the corner of the north Yuba Subbasin is the Marysville Boundary. Now, when our agencies or our GSAs were created back in 2015, the boundaries were, it was allowed to overlap. So, the Yuba Water Agency boundary overlaps the Coruah Irrigation District Boundary and the Marysville Boundary. So, what also submitted required was development of a groundwater sustainability plan, and those plans were required by January of 2020 for critically overdrafted basins, and January of 2022 for high and medium priority basins. The north Yuba Basin is a medium priority basin, and the south Yuba Basin is a higher priority basin. So, the Yuba Basin, the Yuba Groundwater Sustainability Plan was submitted to DWR, Department of Water Resources, in 2021. And that was with collaboration between the city of Marysville, Coruah Irrigation District, and many other stakeholders. It was approved through the long proactive approach to groundwater management in the basins. These plans must include measurable objectives and milestones in increments of five years to achieve sustainability within 20 years of adoption. It's important to note that the north and south Yuba Subbasins, they are sustainable basins. Due to the health of the aquifer, groundwater levels are in good condition, and so when our plan was established, we were already sustainable. GSP, in addition, SIGMA also requires that the plans be open and transparent. So, hence, we've had a public process for collaboration in approving and adopting our plans. Next slide. Okay. So, the plan contains include an executive summary, an introduction, a planned area, a basin setting that includes our hydrogeologic conceptual model. We describe the groundwater conditions such as storage, levels, water quality. We have water budget information in there that describes inflows and outflows of surface and groundwater in the basin, describes our groundwater monitoring network, sustainable management criteria. We have a list of projects and management actions to achieve sustainability in that plan as well. Next slide. All right. So, since adoption of the plan in 2020, we've developed five groundwater sustainability, sorry, five groundwater annual reports. So, water years 2019 to 2023, and our next annual report is going to be submitted to the state at the end of the month.
You mentioned that you have to have metrics that you can refer to and measurements. What are those measurements?
There's several sustainability indicators or measurements. So, the main one is groundwater level is one.
So, depth?
Yeah, the depth of groundwater. So, we have, in our network of monitoring wells, we have criteria which describe at what point the aquifer is full, at what point it's getting close to having concerns, and then a point where that we need to take action.
And we're not concerned about any of those things?
We're not concerned about any of that, yeah. We're, yeah, groundwater conditions are very, very.
People as old as me might have read a book called Cadillac Desert that was published in the late 70s, I think, and a great deal about groundwater, particularly in the middle states where it was overtapped. And the author actually criticized rice farmers in California for their use of water, and then he changed his tune after he got educated, and he didn't realize so much that water flowed back into the system. This is interesting to me. Please proceed.
Okay. Thank you for that. So, since, yeah, since adoption, since 2020, we've been implementing our plan, and Yuba Water Agency has a network of groundwater wells that we monitor monthly, and we've implemented many projects with grant funds. So, like I said before, the Yuba Subbasins are sustainable, groundwater levels are currently healthy, and they've rebounded from the dry years of 2020 and 21. All our annual reports are available on our website at yubewater.org under the Groundwater Management tab.
And the importance of this? Marysville lives off of groundwater. Absolutely. So, that, and we, when you speak to the health of the aquifer, how healthy is it on a scale of whatever scale you use?
That's a good question. Well, ours, like I said, we have a criteria for all of our monitoring wells, and if they drop below a certain level, then we flag that location.
And how are we in the city of Marysville? Can you drill down and focus on Marysville? Or is the entire aquifer the same all over?
It's pretty much, it's pretty much the same between the north, well, let me step back. So, the north basin is distinct from the south Yuba Subbasin because the north has more surface water that gets applied to its irrigated lands, mainly due to the water rights of the member units and irrigation districts in the north. Whereas the south historically has relied on groundwater, so it dropped down pretty low in the 80s, and then as, since Yuba Water Agency partnered with the irrigation districts in the south basin and provided surface water to the south, the groundwater table has risen back to healthy levels. That's one distinction there.
That's a common question. If I remember right, I was on the GSA, I don't know how many years back, Ryan was on it too at that time, was that five or six? In our worst time, when we were having those droughts, we still didn't have a large drop or a concerning drop at that time. Is that correct?
You're, if you're going to speak to the drought... You're, if you want to speak to the drought, I'd pull up Jim Blank, he's, he's a consultant to Water and Kern. Yeah, want to speak to that, yeah.
Thank you, good evening. So you're speaking of the drought, the most recent drought?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we did see groundwater levels decline. So like Charles was mentioning, we do have monthly groundwater level measurements that we take, and we also have devices that are in the wells to measure continuous groundwater levels. So we have a lot of data, we're able to see that decline. And because the, the region conjunctively uses water, meaning that during dry years we use more groundwater and wet years we use more surface water, we do expect those groundwater levels to decline a little bit during drought and then come back up during those wet periods. But they're not declining to the point we're concerned, which is what you're bringing up, right?
Yeah, correct.
They decline some, but they stay within that safe operating zone that, that Charles was talking about, how we have, where are we full? Where do we kind of, where are we kind of happy? And then where, where do we start making decisions to try to, to adjust and adapt to the plan? So we're, we're up in that full, the happy zone for the most part. And so that's through the, again, what, what Charles is mentioning, the conjunctive management and the combined use of our groundwater and surface water resources within Yuba County.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next slide. Okay, so we're recommending that the city adopt the amended groundwater sustainability plan. And currently, DWR is in its process of reviewing the plan that Yuba Water Agency submitted. And we're also, DWR is in a 60-day public review period. So the recommendation is continued implementation of our original GSP while DWR reviews the amended plan. And for the city to continue to collaborate with Yuba Water, Cordeau, and the other stakeholders in the basins. That's all I have. And I can take any additional questions.
Okay. Vincenzo, you're presenting this. You recommend we do all of the above, approve the GSP, the plan?
Yes, if, as a GSA, we can go on our own, but it'll cost a lot of money, so-
No, no, no.
I'd rather piggyback on our larger-
Absolutely.
Great.
Absolutely. Okay. Any questions or comments, council? Oh, any public comment first?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Anything from the council? What is the role of the council?
I'd like to pass the motion, act as recommended.
It's not working. Oh, now it's working. A second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you. And thank you from Yuba Water Agency very much. Water matters and we know it. Mr. Dan Flores. Item number nine on the agenda, may I read the item?
Yes.
Recommendation is pass a appropriately numbered, pass a motion to adopt an appropriately numbered resolution certifying the environmental impact report for the general plan 2050 update, downtown specific plan, and the zoning code update, including adopting the findings of fact, adopting a mitigation monitoring and reporting plan, rejecting land use alternatives, and adopting a statement of overriding consideration for project. Two, adopt an appropriately numbered resolution approving and adopting the city of Marysville General Plan 2050. Three, approve ordinance 1459, adopting the downtown specific plan. Four, approve ordinance 1460, amending the Title 17 zoning code to update the zoning code consistent with state law, amend the zoning map and adopting a new zoning district of quasi, of public slash quasi-public, and amending Title 17 of the city of Marysville municipal code by amending the zoning map to change the zoning district designations consistent with the downtown specific plan. And five, adopt appropriately numbered resolution approving the historic design guidelines. And Dan, I'm sure you and whoever you're going to introduce is going to make that just as clear as can be. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for not having me repeat that or, or say it from memory, because that would be a problem, but Mayor and-
That was a big run on sentences, what that was.
That was a good one, yeah. Might need a break, I'm not sure. But thank you for the introduction and, you know, it's really, my job is really just to introduce the people who have done a fantastic job putting this general plan in, putting it together. So I just wanted to say a few words about Matthew Gurkin and Kathy Pease as I introduce them. Their work has been stellar. I've, I've had the opportunity to work with them over the last three-plus years, day and night they've worked. I've gone to Sacramento, met in their offices, they've been here, been here day and night working on different plans, meeting with different stakeholders, took the time to meet with residents, answered individual residents' questions, called stakeholder meetings together, met closely with our planning commission, met over and over again with city council for feedback, met with city staff for feedback over and over. So I, I just want to tell you, this was like more than a labor of hard work. And yes, I understand they're paid consultants, but they just went, to me, they did really hard work, it was a labor of love, a labor of passion. And one thing I just want to bring out, especially that they came and really absorbed the community, like walked around the community, took photos of the area, met people, went to, we went to restaurants, that's my favorite part of the whole thing, but we did that, got to, got to know people as we went through this process. But it's about creating a plan that we can be proud of. And I think that you're going to hear a presentation now for a plan that has culminated into a, an awesome, you know, I'm just going to say awesome, general plan. And I think it's our opportunity to take this general plan and now execute it for the next few years. You know, it's been since 1984 since we had a general plan. So this is a really big celebratory night for Marysville as we hear this presentation. So without further ado, I want to introduce to you Kathy Pease and Matthew Gurkin for the presentation.
Welcome, 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 welcome. We're, we're at the finish line, I take it?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, very exciting. Well, thank you, Mayor and City Council again. I'm Kathy Pease, I'm a planning consultant. And with me is Matthew Gurkin from AECOM. Matthew is the author of our general plan, our downtown specific plan, and the EIR. So that big volume of work that you did, he was the author, so I really want to thank AECOM and Matthew for all their hard work. I also put on your chairs this evening, we couldn't have done this without a bunch of people, as Dan had indicated. There we go. Too many. So I put two pages on your dais. We are going to put those in the general plan, they should have been in your document, and I realized. So in our general plan, we want to take the opportunity to thank the city council, because you guys have worked hard over the last three or four years, providing input, the planning commission as well. We had public workshops before the city council and the planning commission. And we also had a citizens advisory committee that met five times over a several-year period to give us input. So a big, huge effort, and I just want to make sure that we acknowledge folks. So again, tonight, obviously, we have a huge package to consider. The scope of the effort included a 2050 general plan. 2050 is our horizon year. Again, a general plan is a long-range vision, so we are looking at what the vision for Marysville is over the next 20-plus years. We also got a grant to do a downtown specific plan to look at targeted revitalization. We are updating our zoning code to be consistent with state law, and then we have historic design guidelines. So again, huge effort, a lot of input. We had our general plan advisory committee, again, city council and planning commission. We had an online survey and we sent a flyer, a written flyer to the entire city that went out to let folks know at the beginning of the process that we were going to do this and provide, provided opportunities for input. And then again, we did do stakeholder outreach to some of our bigger employers like Caltrans and the hospital. So some of the things that we heard was a desire to enhance the visual character, to revitalize the downtown, to look and attract new retail, promote walkability, bike paths, and safer pedestrian spaces. And then traffic and congestion were big topics, so looked for ways to improve the mobility in the city. So the 2050 general plan is required by state law. Every jurisdiction is required to have one. Typically, you would update it in a 10- or 20-year timeframe. So again, it's been a while. So there are new, new features. I think it's more readable. We have a chapter on land use, transportation and mobility, open space and recreation, infrastructure modernization, and then environmental standards as well. One of the new chapters is a new requirement of state law. The city of Marysville has designated as a disadvantaged community, and so we are required to address environmental justice. What that means is looking for ways to make sure that we're not locating things that may impact sensitive folks, and so that's a new chapter that we have. The two chapters we did not update are safety and the housing element. The housing element is required to be updated every eight years. And with that, now the safety element needs to be updated on that timeframe as well. So both of those were updated in 2021. So the downtown specific plan, we're really excited about. We got a grant through SACOG and the state, regional early action planning, or REAP grant, that funded the downtown specific plan. It's in this colored area. This is a green means go area that was designated by SACOG to support infill and mobility increases. So with that, we were able to leverage our technical studies and pay for it and help, since we were doing the general plan update at the same time. So it would have cost the city a lot more to update the general plan, but we took advantage of some efficiencies with this. So the downtown specific plan looks to revitalize the downtown, looks for economic opportunities. It, it supports additional housing and, and retail. And with this, we did an environmental impact report that covered both the general plan and the specific plan. So one of the advantages is if development comes forward, we can streamline development and cut down on the time and cost. So it went and took the bounce-back vision and kind of went from there and identified some certain corridors, including the downtown, the East Street corridor, the Medical Arts District, the river, and the Ellis Lake area. It includes, like a general plan, but it goes into more detail. It includes a vision. It looked at the existing conditions and then established land use zones, transportation, open space, and implementation measures. And then, as part of the overall effort, AECOM also refreshed our historic design guidelines. And then finally, we did a zoning code update with recent, also, our housing element had identified some things that we needed to do to be consistent with state law. To do all of this work, we did an environmental impact report. It looked at the potential impacts of implementing all of these plans and policies. It did find that there were air quality, cultural and tribal resource impacts, greenhouse gas emissions and energy, and noise and vibration impacts. So SEQA allows us to go forward with a project even if it has impacts. And then we did have this circulate for a 45-day public review period. We've received four letters. The most substantial was probably from the Airport Land Use Commission, which asked us to address overflight from Sutter Airport. So we did some text changes. We checked with the Airport Land Use Commission and provided them the response, and so they were satisfied with the amendments. Our final EIR includes response to comments, minor text changes. It was required to be available 10 days prior to today, but we actually made it available back in January before we went to planning commission. So folks would have, and the planning commission would have that information when they made a recommendation. So like I said, even if there are significant impacts, the city is able to go forward or approve a project with impacts. This requires something called a statement of overriding considerations. It's a written statement that explains why the benefits of the project may outweigh the unavoidable impacts. So that's one of the actions that we are requesting tonight.
Is that with, is that with respect to any specific action?
Yes. Well, so the significant impacts that we identify, the air quality, the noise, just for the significant ones that we didn't identify mitigation that would reduce it to a less-than-significant level. So if we could identify things and to bring it down to a less-than-significant level with mitigation, we wouldn't have to do overrides. But because we have significant impacts for those five areas, we're asking for written findings. We also are required to adopt mitigation monitoring and reporting program. So anytime you have a SEQA document that has impacts and mitigation, the city of Marysville as the lead agency has to ensure that those mitigation measures are adopted. And so we have a table that has all of the mitigation measures, who will be responsible, and the timing. So if someone comes in for a building permit, you know, we identify what the actions are that would be needed to comply. So for the next steps, if the city approves all these projects, the next step would be implementing the project. One of the things that we heard about is that the city is working with the community on the EEI grant for Chinatown. So a next step could be, that comes out of that process, is to actually designate that as an official district. We may need to or want to do a specific plan to identify improvements in that area, economic development and things to support. So that's, I see this as a more of a living document, the general plan as we go forward. We are allowed to amend the general plan up to four times a year. So we may be able to bring something forward for the Chinatown district or other areas. We also have identified a need to continue to review and update the zoning code and general plan as needed. So with that, we are approving the, approval of the resolutions and first reading of the ordinances. This includes approving and certifying the environmental impact report, adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, SEQA findings, the statement of overriding considerations, adopt the general plan, the downtown specific plan, historic design guidelines, and the zoning code. It's a mouthful. And with that, open for any questions. Thank you.
Let's see. Any questions or comments from the public, Madam Clerk?
We don't have any questions from the public.
Thank you. No comments either, okay. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, just on a point of order, if we can adopt resolutions one, two, and five, and, and vote on those, and then vote on ordinances number three and four, the items separately, so two-
Thank you, Dan.
Two motions, if we can do that.
We can't sweep them all up in one?
Leal council recommended that we adopt the ordinances separately from the resolutions.
You just complicated my job.
I apologize.
So the ordinances require a first reading, and then we need to bring the ordinances back for a second reading.
Okay, what's the first one? Why don't you announce it, and then I'll call the vote?
Okay, sure. So this would be to, a recommendation is to adopt resolutions listed in Items 1, 2, and 5. That's all you have.
What is the will of the council? Yes? And do we have a second?
Sorry, Mayor, you do have to close the public hearing officially before we pass any motions.
Closed. Okay.
Good job.
And you were saying? Any comments from the public? Noting none. Counsel, what's the will of the council? All in favor? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? All opposed, noting none? Next.
The next recommendation is to approve ordinance as shown in Item 3 and 4. And this will be for the first reading. So that's the recommendation.
What's the will of the council? Sir?
Ordinances.
Ordinances. Okay. We have a motion? And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Thank you.
Stuart, good job. Kathy? Sir? Thank you. Thank you, thank you. How many pages is this book? 400?
So, Mayor, I actually had to count it. It was about 637 pages.
Where's, where would it be? Where would, if someone actually wanted to look at it and ask somebody about it?
I have them.
You're the person? Okay.
It's also all online on the Community Development Planning website.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay. That doesn't seem like a proper end to that big project. How long, how long has this been going? That's right. No, it's, it's since the day I showed up, I think. And considerable expense, a lot of community involvement. I remember the, the community members almost filling the gallery when you're having the, going over things and the, and the Planning Commission. Lots of work. It deserves more of a send-off than we're giving it. And I almost feel like apologizing for that, but it was a significant undertaking. When would the next update be required or be appropriate?
Our next milestone will be 2027 and 2028, when we start to work on the housing element again, which I can't believe is coming up. That's not that far away. So we'll be-
And why, why is that? Why is that required?
So, state law requires that we update the housing element every eight years. If you remember, they give us an allocation, the regional housing needs allocation, and we have, we get a bunch of residential units, and we have to figure out how to accommodate those. So they give us a mandate to build a certain number, even though we have no control, a certain number of units to be built within the community within that eight-year period. And as part of the agenda tonight on consent, we have to give a yearly report out on how many units are constructed to meet that goal.
Who are, who are we reporting all this to?
So, the requirement is to the State Housing and Community Development Department, and I also have to give the Governor's Office, it used to be called OPR, Office of Planning and Research, so now they've changed the name, but they need a report on our general plan implementation every year by April 1st.
And thank you for mentioning in your presentation the possibility of some new, designating a district with respect to the Chinatown and, and the planning that's going to be ongoing here for the next couple of years. And thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Well, again, it's, it's not a proper send-off, but it was great work, and I personally thank you, and I'm sure I'm expressing the feelings of everyone on the dais.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it, too.
Keep it, bless y'all.
I'd like to say thank you guys, to you guys, too. I was on the Planning Commission first introduced. It was, it was definitely a work of art. You guys are just so wonderful to work with and so easy and have such great ideas. I really appreciate the time, knowledge you have.
Now, you're the, you're the general plan man here.
Well, yes. So my goal, when taking on the role of being an elected official for the City of Marysville, was to get this done. So I've completed something in my life-
Touchdown.
-that I can be very proud of, and it is a direct result of your hard work, your efforts. You guys made it fun, very fun as well, and I learned a lot through you. So thank you very much. This is very exciting, and it will grow. It is a living document, and hopefully we will encourage many other neighborhood districts to evolve into a title of some kind, suitable. Thank you.
Bless y'all. Thank you. We can now move to council correspondence?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Good news. Council comments? Why don't we start with you, Councilman Gilchrist?
So those were my council comments. The general plan is completed. My work here is done. And they don't have any committee reports to, to report on? Thank you. And thank you once again always. It is a given for the entire city staff of Marysville. Thank you very much for all your hard work.
Councilman Hudson, anything to share?
Not a lot. I do think you two, for the long dedicated time you've given the city for the past four-plus years, and even before that in the housing element and so forth, and you guys have been around for a long time, and I appreciate you guys. I just want to say thank you to the staff. There's been a lot of behind-the-scenes work going on the past few weeks, and it's just nice to see things come to where they could just go on the consent, not have a lot of discussion on things. So I want to thank all of you guys for that. And I think I saved a few trees by asking you not to make me a personal copy of that. Online is just fine.
I appreciate it.
So with the rest being said, thank you to all of our departments. And there's no rule committee reports at this particular time. I'll save that for the next meeting. Thank you very much. Your role is-
I'd like to thank Chief Sacks and his staff for that, so efficient on that 10th Street accident that happened a couple of weeks ago. And the fire department. I was just having to walk out of a restaurant nearby and saw it. It was fair on your staff to have to extract and deal with the accident, and I appreciate your time. And also, I want to thank Chief Kyle for the feasibility study. I think that at one time, when I was campaigning, I talked to him about it, the cost savings alone was definitely efficient for the city and the annexation. And I think I, I want, I'm hoping I can get this correct, that the Marysville Fire Department, our station, will remain Marysville Fire Department. It will not be Lynda Annex Fire Department. I think that's important to our residents, so, or to that remaining the same and still providing the same staffing and the level of service. I also wanted to do, again, a heartfelt thank you to you guys for the general plan. You know, this is, your efforts have been instrumental in moving this project forward, and I truly appreciate the commitment and passion you bring to your work. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Who's our IT guy on these? I don't know what's going on with them. But anyway, I'm going to jump onto and appreciate both of you, Kathy. You've been, helped us on many things, but I don't even know how you guys can do something like this. I would, but thanks, thanks both of you, and we, I appreciate everything that you did, and the staff that had, I don't want to say had to help you, got to help you on this. So we really appreciate that. I also, although he already said it himself, I am going to thank Stuart for driving this. From the day he got on, started pushing this, I thought we were going to have to strap him down and gag him, but he, he did drive it hard to get it moving and going, and I appreciate that, Stuart. Just a little reminder for all you guys that play baseball, we're having tryouts on March 29th. So anybody that feels they're strong enough to play for the High Wheelers, head on out. And, and it ought to be fun, even if you're not trying out just to watch it. It ought to be a good time. Thanks.
Mayor, Mayor? I just want to say welcome to Anissa, our new city person here. So.
Hi, everyone. My name's Anissa Leeung. I am the City of Marysville's new Finance Director. I have 10 years, at least 10 years of municipal experience. I worked in a more urban town prior to this in New Jersey. So I've come a long way. I am very, very honored to be here, and I look forward to working with you. And obviously, if you ever need anything, please let me know. My office is always open.
In our, the last meeting I had with the planning consultants, I went in there and I was, actually, I was kind of animated because it was something I hadn't thought of before, and I wanted to check and make sure, goodness sakes, have we done anything that could get in the way of, or cause a problem with respect to our businesses that generate sales tax revenue for the city, which is the largest single source of revenue for the city, both through the Bradley Burns and the Measure C sales taxes. And in fact, they had not done anything, but, and we went over area by area and resolved my concerns. So it was really a knock on me that I hadn't thought of it before, but they had. And so, and I, and I went away from that meeting with the comfort that they had thought deeply about things I hadn't even asked about. And that's nice to have that kind of trust and confidence. And we'll move forward, and like you said, need to tweak something four times a year? You can tweak something. That's it for me. Mr. City Manager?
I had a couple things. First, I, just more comments, and then I have one announcement. But I did want to comment on the general plan. I am very proud of our staff, proud of our consultants, the community members that stepped up for, for the input. Can't remember the name of the committee we gave it, but-
Advisory Committee.
The Advisory Committee, and the Planning Commission, because the Planning Commission did a significant amount of analysis of the documents. Councilmember Hudson read all 600 pages online. Very proud of him and the rest of the council. So it was a great effort, and I think it really pulled good input from the community when we did it. 1985 to 2025, that's 40 years. Just a cautionary thing, I might be retired before the next one gets done, but the analogy I will use is the Olympics. So Olympics track and field every four years. Those athletes typically don't just stop after the Olympics and wait another four years and then start training. They probably start training immediately after the Olympics is over, whether they want or lose. They also move into, not the Olympics, but I think it's called the World Athletic Games that come in between the Olympics, and they hone their skills in those. But the Olympics is the big-ticket item, and our general plan is the big-ticket item. I don't want to start training for the next general plan update 40 years from now. I'm hoping, I think a 15- to 20-year horizon is pretty typical, and then we've got lots of work to do in between. We have, we just mentioned the Chinatown effort. We have lots of development we want to do. There will probably be some zoning code updates along the way. So I just want to make the cautionary statement that it's, it's the final, final for the general plan, but we got lots of work to do after that in between. And Stuart is probably already preparing for the next one. So that's what I wanted to say about the general plan. I did want to also welcome Anissa. She was fairly modest in her introduction of herself. She comes all the way from New Jersey, but she managed the finances in New Jersey for a city about the size of Yuba City. 70,000 roughly? How many did you have in? Yeah. Okay, so half the size of Yuba City, I guess, but larger than this city. She has a bachelor's and a master's degree in accountancy, I believe, from a university that is well-known for its accountancy graduates. And as she mentioned, she spent 10 years managing that organization's budget and finance. Since she's been here, I have found that she is a very quick study, and much of the things that we talk about, though she may not be familiar with the idiosyncrasies of Marysville, she has had experience in the same types of things that we've been dealing with here, and has just picked up on what we're doing here very quickly. So I'm looking forward to working with Anissa, and I hope everybody can welcome her as well, and, and I think she'll make a great addition to our executive team. And, oh, one announcement. I'd be remiss if I didn't make it. Mr. Flores wanted me to remind everybody that we are having a ribbon cutting at the Annex Building with YCOE. What's the date and time? And I'm glad-
What is the, what is the Annex Building?
The Annex Building is that building that used to be the Chamber of Commerce Building, and then used to be the building that housed the-
Tenth and, Tenth and Northeast Quarter.
It's a much nicer building now. I'm glad it's over with, but it turned out very, very well. So hope to have everybody there.
Next regular meeting of the Marysville City Council will be on Tuesday, April 1st at 6:00 PM. We are adjourned.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumuslakeselfstorage.com.
Get details at yshome.show. Together we'll create, let this passion flow.